I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take the roll, everybody hit your present button and then hit confirm. Here he gets it. He needs him to do it. There you go. You're lucky. You don't know if he's here or not. Taking roll, guys. Anyway, there's thirteen present to that. Okay, this time you have a copy of the amendments approved. You got a motion to approve the minutes. Second, second. So next, second motion. Any discussion? Okay, y'all those in favor of approval, vote aye, and then press your confirm button. Anyone wish to change your vote? Okay, ladies, show us the vote. We have thirteen yes and two absent. Minutes are approved. We have, uh... No republic renewals. I'll entertain a motion to approve the renewal. Motion by Soonak, second by West York. Any discussion? We are ready to vote. Those in favors, vote yes, and then press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no. On the...
Unless it's changed.
And the renewals are BNA Ward, G Bradley Thompson, Michael W Cannon, Joseph R Jones, Helen Mason, Chelsea D Arnetta, Diane Miller, Rhonda S Longmire, Adora Alvey, Linda F Harris, Paige Ender, Vicki Brayden, Wilma T Cox, Tempia F Roy, Melissa Moses, Brenda Shepherd, Vicki Spradlin, and Melissa M Darby. Call the roll.
Hairs. Yes. Hairs.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Paul. Yes. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Nance. Yes. Oryx.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Singley.
Yes.
Stanfield.
Yes.
Wildin.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Thirteen yes and two absent. The no republic renewals are approved. Next, we'll entertain a motion to approve committee reports and minutes.
Motion approved.
To include budget and finance committee meeting minutes of April the sixteenth and May the fourteenth. We have a motion by Oryx, seconded by Carl Beard.
Uh...
Bobby White.
Uh, on the April sixteenth budget finance, are we approving that?
We are.
Uh, I believe I would see it. I am up here, but yet I'm out.
Okay, it needs to be corrected.
Just describe my name on that.
We need to remove Bobby White's name from being absent on April the sixteenth. Okay, with that correction, we are ready to vote. All those in favor of approving the committee minutes and reports, vote yes, and then press your confirm button. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ladies. Thirteen yes, two absent. Committee reports and minutes are approved. Now we'll move on to our budget amendments and funding resolutions.
Motion approved five one through five twelve.
Yep, motion to approve five one through five twelve, got seconded by Bobby White. Any discussion? Okay, we're ready to vote. All those in favor, vote yes, and then press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no.
Mine's out again. No votes since voting, actually. That's when it kicks you out. If it don't say voting, you can't do that.
Well, that canceled that, and go back.
Mr. Chairman, while she's redoing that, can we do a discussion on five ten?
Sure.
How are we assured this money's gonna be spent on the pit burner? Give me a second. It's not five ten, it's, uh... Let me just... It's five four, I believe it was. I'm sorry.
Five four is... Five seven.
Five seven.
I can tell you that the state is gonna make us do so.
Right. And the reason I ask, it's not that I disagree that it's gonna be spent on pit burner, it needs to be repaired. Richard and I had a discussion earlier. It was brought before Environmental Committee and this board, and approved by this board to spend money on a knuckle boom, that's a transfer station. Instead of it maybe being used by a knuckle boom, it was used by a track hole, which this is one of the few times I agree with the department head, it's a better purchase because it's not mobile or stationary, it can be used in several locations. Problem I had with it is, if it... It didn't change categories in the finance department, but it was brought before us and approved as a knuckle boom. And if it was gonna be spent for other purposes, I feel it should've been brought back before either Environmental Committee or us again. And that makes me question, if we're gonna approve money for something, then, you know, they got... They can run off and spend it on something else, then why do we even approve it?
Well, you have to approve the money to put it in the right phone, get into capital outlay of capital product, which can spend on any kind of capital product.
So, instead of asking us to spend money for a knuckle boom, you know, he could... And in the finance department, all they do is just put it in equipment, you know, and then it could be spent on anything other than a knuckle boom, as long as it's equipment. I think the money was the same, and like I said, I don't have a problem with it, but if we're gonna appropriate money for one thing, it'll all be spent for that instead of spent for something else, without coming back before us, being spent. This kinda sounds like an asphalt plant that was appropriated for, and then it got spent on blacktops of that asphalt plant. But I think that did come back before the commission. I just wanna throw that out there to y'all.
I guess Tom Otten is my good man.
Sure.
With the knuckle boom, is that the thing that the knuckle boom is gonna do? Is that what it's doing? Don't have an issue with that. I don't have...
Any other questions? Ready to vote? All those in favor of five one through five twelve, vote yes. We're still messed up.
Are we backing on that?
We're voting, we're still adding.
Oh, yeah, Tom's still adding.
We're still adding.
Confirm your vote, and then we'll go back out. Confirm your vote.
Now, they didn't have a yes and then a no.
Okay. Now, we ready, girls?
We ready.
All those in favor, vote yes. And ready, confirm button. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ladies. We got eleven yes, two no, with Tom Hatmaker and Scott Stanfield voting no. Okay, we have four more budget amendments that we will need a motion to suspend the rules to take them up.
Have a motion to suspend the rules. Is it all there?
Five thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and...
Sixteen.
Sixteen. I'll second that motion. Make a second of it. Rest of the nation, the motion, Steve Bruce has seconded the motion to suspend the rule. Everybody have a copy of the budget amendment? Okay, everybody in favor, all those in favor of suspending the rules, vote yes, and then press your confirm button. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ladies. Thirteen yes, rules are suspended. Now we'll need a... A motion to approve five thirteen through five sixteen.
I think we can bring them down. Can we do one at a time? Let's do one at a time.
You got certain ones you want to confirm?
Well, everyone, everyone. Let's just go one at a time, maybe up there.
Make the motion.
I'll make the motion, we do one at a time.
We are. You got a motion on five thirteen, that here second?
I'll second.
If you'd like to come in and explain the motion, the budget amendment, Richard.
Is this the first curb route where you can go down the Bill Gosses and... Or that power pole or telephone poles in the road?
Yeah, that's where it's at.
Can you explain how it's...
Yes. Rest of me and I, I've been looking for it. It's been a couple years. Power poles, the first time that was a power pole. The problem is, it's fairly expensive, very powerful, so... The first, first day, and then decided to pay my brother off, because it's probably required, but the road on the other side of the power pole, and that's a great road. Roger's pretty hard, they cross. Bill's hard, it's a lot, I don't know if they can give us a lot, maybe. I guess, uh, they have a ton, probably. Kevin, all right. I guess we can say the last, appreciate, um, the town, perhaps, um, state. And, uh, the politics, you know, it's always... They even, they're very clever, helping operate, and they're pretty big, big property, pretty... There you go, there's a bunch of money, rest of the dead.
Our house, brother.
Our house, I'm... Probably, too many of them, too. What they're there, they're yours now, and probably, they're... Probably the way I work at some key, like, the most loaded, most popular. And it's... Um, it's what you're building, it's... They've been serving people, they find, you know, they're like...
In all of that, they've been going on through the dry ice, and they've been... This time of year, you know, Tom, this time of year, they've had a lot of fat. I appreciate being a strong, young men's talk, and working out, walking, but I hope it's a sport, I mean, I had two highers play up, and that's where it came out of, is that other high.
Okay, Marie.
I told you, look, look.
Okay.
You guys, uh, where's the... They do, I feel like, those are... Could have to, um, I mean, I'm ready to do whatever, uh, very, very, uh, and I hope, I hope you guys play the time, God, I think, you're gonna do, and you answer, I don't know, it's, uh, it's been a problem.
Okay, any other questions? Raise the vote. All those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no. Anybody wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ladies. Thirteen yes, two abs. Five thirteen is approved. Need a... A motion on the rest of the budget amendments.
Make the motion. Go ahead, Johnny. Thank you, guys.
Johnny, Bruce. Five fourteen, second, Bobby White.
The bill five fifteen is in the county general fund. I think the belt's basically, including the reasons, has supposed to be given seven two thousand dollars, and the management library operates between thirty and forty. I found that one, so it raises nine thousand dollars, and five two, two thousand, three seven, four hundred and ninety, nineteen, given here, and I think it's a good time. Uh, we're just trying to, like, two thousand dollars, we need, uh, we're...
Any questions? Ready to vote? All those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ladies. Ten, yes, three no. Those voting no, Soonak, Scott Stanfield, and Beverly Hall. Five fourteen is approved. Next one is, uh, budget amendment five fifteen. I hear a motion to approve. Motion by Bobby White, I hear second. Seconded by Terry Singley. Any question or discussion?
Can't they use the bathroom?
Mr. Chairman, I got, I guess Walt's here, let me ask Walt. Where do we see a need for this, that Walt? Where do we see a need for this truck?
It's a service...
Service truck with a boom on it?
Service truck with a crane, to service the equipment.
Yes, uh, when we got rid of, I don't know, that on the road, we were service trucks, so we could put the truck out, well, I'm not, uh, the truck, it's...
What would the use for the boom be?
The boom, maybe with the tire, and the truck, and the truck, you know, you have to go down the tire, or whatever, or have it, or... Especially when you got landfill, sometimes, like, over there, it's probably the boom that, or...
Boom's not gonna be big enough to pull a garbage truck out. They don't make a boom on, unless you get into a wreck.
They've got, uh, they take the people, uh, service truck.
I'm trying to imagine how you could hook it up to a tar. Like, you're... You saying for the removal or putting the tar back on the truck? Or just loading the tar?
Uh, we could put it on the truck, the light, the car, or...
Okay. Thanks.
Beverly.
What, Bob, what's been used in the previous years? What's been used in the previous years?
Yeah, I mean, just kinda how the most, uh, vehicles...
Bobby White.
Uh, what, what? I don't know what kind of vehicle you're gonna buy for six, five hundred dollars, Bob. Do you have something in mind?
I mean, you don't have to go there, you, you talk, you can go there that long time, but I just know what the question is, uh, or how to say it, uh, certainly, uh, you know.
I don't think you're gonna get much of it, six, five hundred dollars, I mean, for a service truck, uh, with a, with a frame or whatever on it. I, I really don't. I bought cranks, I know the size of the crank. Believe me, I paid five thousand dollars, I paid, uh, many times over there.
It's a F three fifty with a new seven point three liter diesel engine, uh, flat bed, just before utility beds, fuel box is on the crane.
Two thousand?
Yeah, it's, uh...
Most of the, uh, the, uh, tires, they're talking about...
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Yeah.
Two things. First of all, to disc golf to the environmental committee. Secondly, again, this is just a real vague line item. We can appropriate this, and maybe go spend it on something else. So how are we... How are we assured that this money's gonna be spent on this? Other than it's just line itemed out?
It's just a portion of the proceeds that they got from the surplus of equipment.
Yeah, I understand that, but we're being told they're gonna buy one thing...
It's a specific amount for a specific vehicle.
So was the other one. And it went through environmental committee. If we, if we got rules in place, and if we're gonna have committees to have responsibilities, then we need to... If this was Nashville, it would never made it here before it went through committee. I mean, you were Nashville, did anything go... So the fort didn't go before committee?
Yeah. It's rules, you can bring things straight to the floor.
It's very rare, what...
Mr. Chairman, question.
Yeah.
This is money that they've already accumulated from the sale of equipment that they had as surplus, right?
Correct.
So it's just basically moving interdepartmentally.
Correct.
Right. No questions.
Okay, everybody ready to vote? Those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change... Anyone wish to change their vote? Show us the vote, now. Seven yes, six no. Motion failed. Is that right? Did it take eight? Next one is budget amendment five sixteen. Do I hear a motion to approve budget amendment five sixteen?
Motion to approve five sixteen.
Second, Terry Seigley. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, should I went into last meeting, mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this gonna be additions or what we already have?
Yes. Sunat?
And then the, what do you have on there?
They have just the animal control pickup truck, and then they have a dump truck. They still have a little white pickup, I don't think so. The dump truck has been on its life length for a while, they just keep getting back up and have the bear, get the sarotna if they're afraid of these, when they haul the animals from stock cans, if they're gonna end up on the, falling out on the road.
Thank you, Marcy.
Did this go before the animal control committee?
Uh, I don't think so. I don't know.
When do all these things aren't going?
I don't know whether it's, um, it's the end of the year, it's the end of the year-
Enough Saturday, isn't it?
No, I don't think so.
Which one?
I don't think it's the intention. Towards the end of the year, everybody's wanting to get their, all their ducks in the road.
seven times a year to haul a load every two months, somewhere in that neighborhood. And, uh, environmental services was gonna allow them to use a dump truck they have for that, that, so they, that will eliminate the need for the dump truck.
Are we gonna sell the dump truck?
Yes.
The one they got?
Yes.
And the steel, we're gonna stake surplus and buy it?
Yes.
A, a pickup or dump truck?
Pickup truck.
Uh-
They don't know that yet.
Okay, you know, it's true, at one time, we had, it's saying we may wanna help with this, but at one time, we had money in there for two or three officers.
Yeah.
Had money for two new pickup trucks.
I'm not sure on that, I know as far as employees are like that.
In two thousand and nine, is that right, Richard? Two thousand and nine, we took the money for the other officer, and put it back in there, uh, helped balance the budget.
But, but you know what, one of the biggest mistakes we ever made was not having three officers, because, I mean, honestly, you take one officer and having this whole county, of course, you have the pilot that, that helps. I mean, we stand here, you know, with the windows down. But, that's something we need to do later on. I mean, we-
We've talked about that before.
We have a great need out there, and we're not meeting it. And, uh, and what it's gonna take is money to meet. We're, we're gonna have to make more personnel out there, because we're gonna cover this whole county, because one person can't do it. That's just like the sheriff, the whole of this county, by himself, taking these things.
You're talking about the dog catcher, just have another dog keeper in the county?
Another officer.
Actually, another officer and put, and, and, and you know, there's something that, if you call nine one one, and there's a bag of dogs at the field, and, and, you need someone watching it, and one man can go it. I mean, we, we need, we need to look at it.
Any other discussion, Marie, do you have another?
One, I support mine.
Okay.
Such a reduction, you know, in forty-five hundred. How are we able to reduce it that much?
Those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ladies. We got ten, ten yes, three no. Marie Ayers, Tom Hatmaker, and Scott Stanfield voting no. At this time, we'll take up the report from county officials and all other departments, and other reports.
We need to include reports that are in here on, in the packet on.
That's all that's ever used to serve.
Sometimes it's listed, others are listed.
You want second, sir?
I'll second.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, vote yes, and then press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ladies. Thirteen yes, four are approved. Other under matters, other, under other matters, we have the letter grant resolution. I need a motion to approve that.
So moved.
We have a motion, I think, segmented by West York. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, vote yes, press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ladies. Thirteen yes, two absent. Resolution is approved. Also, under other matters, you have the, a letter here from, uh, the school system concerning the business machines company contract that we discussed last month, and we need some action. You, everybody have that? We need a motion to approve, uh, payment of three hundred dollars a month for six months. Motion by Bruce, segmented by Bobby White. Any discussion? Everybody, all those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no. Okay, anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ladies. Got, uh, twelve yes, one abstention, and two absent. Bob Walden abstained. Motion is approved. Mr. Chairman. Bob?
I just, I just wanted to let myself, because I abstained, because I didn't, I don't know what, what it was about, I'm just, I followed, I was just debating the stuff. I just took my vote for me.
Okay. Okay, now we'll go forward. The, uh, only thing that I had really was the Cliff Brandon property, and I've not been able to get in touch with him, so we'll take that, no action on that. And the, uh, airport committee, we met just prior to this meeting, and you all have a copy of a resolution to acquire property adjacent to the airport. We need a, a motion to, motion by Bobby White, segmented by Johnny Bruce. The airport committee has recommended approval of this resolution.
Chairman, uh, I would like to add that this is not costing anything, this is done by grants and money that the airport has presently, it would cost them nothing.
The State Aeronautics Division on purchasing property that we're required to have or need to have, they will pay ninety percent of the appraisal, ninety percent of the purchase price if they, if it's approved. And we have the fund, I think they call it in the vision, something vision again, it's money that has been, that the airport accumulates from the operation and from other grants and federal funds that come to the airport. Sunat?
What's the price of the property?
Uh, we don't know that exactly yet. I've talked to Jimmy, and the, the appraiser has, Jimmy and Neil have agreed to sell the property, and I've been trying to, uh, called him three times to get him to give us a price, but the, uh, appraisers will come in and appraise it, and then, then we'll go from there. So this is not-
He can come back.
This is just, uh, this is just a resolution to apply to the state to allow us to do. Yes.
Yes. This is just an intent.
We have motion by Bobby White, segmented by Johnny Bruce. Okay, all those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ladies. Thirteen yes, two absent. Resolution is approved. Bobby, Insurance Committee?
Yes, right. Uh, the insurance meeting, and y'all have a copy of the, uh, committee report, uh, we met May the fourteenth, uh, with Nicole, David Cole, and, uh, and she told us this could be zero increase in our health insurance plan, uh, through, uh, next year. And, uh, what we need to do, we need to pass a, a, just made a motion through the state to stay with our president insurance carrier, and I will make that motion this time.
What second?
Motion by Bobby White, segmented by Sunat, that Campbell County stay with our president insurance carrier.
Health insurance carrier.
Health insurance carrier. Tom Hatmaker.
Bobby, is there gonna be any reductions in coverage?
No, no.
Nothing changes?
No, no change, does all the coverage, and no increase.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ladies. Thirteen yes, two absent.
Okay, and, uh, David, is there anything else that we need to do other than that? Okay, but is there anything else, other than voting to stay, is this happening, is there anything else? Thank you, you do a very great job, David.
Okay. Marie, do you have anything ready on?
I have to go with six, one, I think we're going with anything.
Tom Hatmaker?
Yes.
You had something about highway?
What?
Johnny Bruce?
I'd like to ask, you know, if this was a, this was a-
Yeah.
Uh, I asked for a, a, a recreation committee meeting, five, six, nine, today, and, for some reason, they wasn't on. Last Monday, I-
Recreation Committee meeting.
That's okay, I'll just, hey, just sit in the-
So you wanna have it, uh, before, at the, uh, second Monday, second Monday of June, at the workshop?
At the workshop, right.
Well, the-
What's on the meeting?
Budget and finances at, uh, five. Recreation Committee, four thirty, everybody okay to tell them that committee for that? Okay, everybody's saying no, so that'd be good. Okay, now Tom.
Thank you. I'm going to defer the motion to Joe, if he will, since he and I spoke about this earlier today. So that we're correct on the motion, I would probably rather have him word the motion.
What, what we discussed, was, uh, that, uh, line of standing, uh, on here, you want to come back to the measure, of this, this, uh, I thought it, it talked this hard about this, because apparently he was proposing to put a guard rail, uh, along-
I, I asked him about it.
The road, what's the name of it?
It's Lawson Lane.
Lawson Lane, and we did, and discussed, uh, before there was being action taken on that, that we need to see, because we're trying to find the width of the right of way to be, uh, for it to be, uh, it's, and, 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 we don't, we don't have it listed on a road list that, uh, in, in, defined, so I, I don't, I'm not a hundred percent on it, I mean-
Is it listed in the county road?
Yes, Lawson Lane is the county road, yes. I'm not a hundred percent sure on the width, uh, and Tom had went to Brandon Parton's office and said there was a thirty-foot right of way, but, uh, without a survey, I don't know for sure, but, uh, I, I don't know where Brandon got that, but it may be, it may be the right, right of way. For, for those who use, who are new to this, I guess they probably should explain to this, this is something that's been discussed a lot in the past, but not very much with this community. There is no, uh, statute that states the width of county roads. Probably ninety-five percent of the roads, or county roads, in this county- in this county were never needed in the county, and there was never an easement given. It was just something that occurred over time. County was just getting work in the road over time, but just became county roads. Now, since the planning commission came into existence in 1972 or '71, uh, that has changed a lot. There's new buildings coming in. You have requirements to say, "Road is supposed to be 52 wide and that's just a..." A, um, variance rhythm. But even since that time, there have been new roads that have been taken in and maintained and not worked as county roads, but there never was any kind of formal dedication made. And I'm really simplifying things here, but basically what that means is that if you can't know the length of either a knee or an easement, the width of the right of way is just whatever is there. It's just whatever county's worth. It's not 20 feet or 15 or 30. It's just whatever is there. And the width is varying along the stretch of a road. I mean, we have one situation right now where there is a street engine. It, I'm sure y'all recall, on the right of the street road, where there's a issue there about where the right of way is necessary. And a survey has been, uh, ordered to try and help determine. So, uh, we... What we're trying to find out, as I understand, which part of Hatmaker, to be able to determine what the width of the right of way is. I don't know if we can, but we could... We could factor that in, too, to see what we find.
And one thing... One thing that hurt when I came into office in 2004, uh, our records had been burnt. Our computers had been erased. My predecessor destroyed everything we had. We had to start all over again. So that really hindered my efforts. And we've been trying, every time there's been a survey done, we've tried to record that and make our, uh, records as... As up to date as possible. That one hadn't been done. So I don't know, uh... I just don't know what that right of way is without a survey, so...
So, Joe, what is your motion?
Well, I'm understanding that what their request is they just, uh, can't determine the width of this right of way. The, uh, survey assistance in that regard, and then we report that back to the commission for such action as you might be approaching. Do you feel that way?
I'd like to add, too, that if I can, Joe. Pending the results and the information that we find out, what Dennis was wanting us to do is if we approve the installation of a guardrail, and in fact, we're gonna be in the right to put it up or install it, you know, all Dennis was asking was our support. And that's what I'm calling... That's the vote I'm asking for. It's just a vote of support for the guardrail, pending the information that we got on.
What guardrail going in?
It's, uh, right there on the right, going up the hill, with bank on the steam. Where the bank's been dug out. The cars are sticking out in the road, blocking the road.
How far is it from the church?
I don't...
Rather than make that decision of whether it... That we needed a guardrail, I just wanted the commission's thoughts on it before, uh, a guardrail was put up there because, uh, I didn't wanna take it on myself and put a guardrail up there because, uh, I want you all to look, make sure that's what you wanna do. And you're the commission. If it's what you want, why? I get paid from the neck down. You're gonna just get paid from the neck up, so...
I'm sorry, Dennis. Bob was saying that we need a guardrail. It's been like this for as long as Lawson Lane's been up there, isn't it?
No. Who dug the bank out, Dennis?
Uh, uh, the gentleman that's got the scrapyard. And I... And I'm not against it. I'm not for it. I'm not against it. I'm not either way. I'm not saying that I'm wanting to put a guardrail up there. I've been requested to put a guardrail up. And rather than make that decision and go up there and slap a guardrail up there, I want you guys to make that decision.
We have... Excuse me just a minute, please. We have a motion, as I understand it, to determine the right of way of Lawson Lane and to encourage the road department, Campbell County Road Department, to install a guardrail. Is that... I need a second if we... Is that...
Encourage or support?
Yeah. I hear a second.
Second.
Second by Scott Stanfield. Mr. J.L. Davis?
Uh, Mr. Fox, uh, you had a conversation with the oldest office that we've...
If a guardrail goes up, it will hinder the gentleman that has the scrapyard from probably getting in and out of his property. That's the reason I said, rather than... I had a request to put a guardrail up there, rather than just go up there and do that. And, uh, there will probably be some legal ramifications if it's done, because it'll probably block him out of his property. So, uh, at a requi... At a request from a commissioner, I said if you will get the county commission to say that that's what needs to be done and wants, and you want to be done, I'll follow your orders. I want it to be y'all's decision, not mine.
Roger's group owns the Jones Quarry property there. They were key lines on property.
Just to clarify something there. It's not... It's across the road from Jack's World Metals. It's not on their side of the road. So it technically, it's not gonna block them out of their property. It might hinder them getting some trucks in there. And the purpose of the guardrail is not to keep the trucks out. It's to keep cars that are trying... Trucks that are parking in there, and some of the employees that are parking in there that are sticking out in the road.
Bobby White?
Uh, are we gonna put up a guardrail to keep people from parking? Does that... I mean, is that the... Is that what we're saying here?
Yeah.
Where's the road?
They're parking right in the road.
Well, I mean, I think... I think we can cure parking in the road a lot better than we can by putting up a guardrail. I'm sorry. I mean, that's just the way I feel.
I'm not the one asking. I'm just... I'm just getting y'all blasted. I want you to understand that I'm not the one asking.
Number one, you know, you're asking... Or we are being asked to do something, and I don't even know what we're doing. I mean, I didn't even know where Lawson Lane was until you mentioned the scrapyard. And, uh, you know, I've got places in my district where it's straight down, and we don't have a guardrail. And, and, and I'm... You know, if we have people who are parking on a county of right of way, I think legally we can do something other than put up a guardrail. I'm...
They've been asked. And the sheriff's department's...
We don't ask. Write tickets.
The sheriff's department's been out there. They've been told not to park there, and they're still parking there.
But let me tell you something. When you write tickets and collect money for this county, that kinda gets attention to me.
See, the whole point may be moot, too, because, uh, we may only own to the edge of the asphalt. Just like Joe said, we might not own. That may be Rogers Group's, uh, property. It may not have anything to do with Campbell County at all. Still, something's looked at, determined if right of way is even there. We don't know what we got. There are places in the county that's edge of asphalt. That's all we got.
Right.
Yeah, as far as finding what... What the right of way is, I haven't been talking to them.
Bob Walden?
Well, that's... That's also, uh, the question, Bob. That's probably an issue for Sheriff's Department not to be able to ride. It's like saying if they don't want the right of way, if it's a right of way violation, they wanna... They gotta know where the line is. And I... And I'm sure... If Dennis doesn't know, he knows, but Sheriff's Department doesn't know where the right of way is. So if they're in the right of way, you won't know it without the survey, I guess.
And I think that's the first thing we need to do. It's find out the right of way. And then, if we got a problem, then we need to address that problem.
That was the motion.
And that was...
Find out. Find the right of way first.
When he was brought to me to put a guardrail up there, you know, if you bought somebody out and stopped their flow of business, will it be a lawsuit? And we're gonna get Campbell County and involved in a lawsuit? Is that what's gonna happen? So I didn't wanna take that on myself. I was 15 people, and I kept deciding. Because 15 people smarter than one. And I'm not very smart anyway, so...
Couple of things. I'm gonna do... If we go just put up a guardrail, and people go up through there, are we gonna force people to be trying to get up there and run around at church or somewhere else? So I don't know a month... Bob, I haven't seen a physical issue. Um, and it's probably across the road belongs to Rogers Group. And the issue is from Jack's World Metals. Has anybody asked Jack's World Metals to work with Rogers Group to get an easement? And maybe dig out further, do some kind of a lease to create parking for the employees over there? Let them take the survey. I don't know about you, but if you got that many roads on your record that we don't know where the right of ways are, we can't afford to go out and start surveying every county road that we don't know where the right of ways are. If we can't pave them, we sure don't have the money to be surveying them. I don't know how much the survey is. Have we... Have we got a...
I don't even have a line out of my budget for surveys, because that's something we just don't do. We tiptoe around, uh, issues and...
I did one lot surveying, $426,000 or something. I don't know what it is.
Yeah, we had... I think I've had one survey done in eight years. So it's not a big expansion for us. We just don't let it be.
Then we can afford the survey. Then there's the extension of the guardrail. I mean, I'm... Bob, I think we can take big rocks and try and put them and block it off. But to me, if it's this business, and if I'm not mistaken, there are many properties, even the sales or whatever Rogers Group's, found out that they have some kind of a relationship.
Right.
And did they not try to work out something? And I haven't seen the physical spot. I mean, can you dig out and recess it more? Get the vehicles out of the road? You need to step forward retaining wall and...
And again, I'm not the one asking to do this.
I haven't seen it. So I'm asking you, is it... Does it look possible?
Oh, I would say it'd be possible to dig out, uh... Dig it out and make it wider. I would think so. I mean, uh, I don't know.
If they got that tracal thing there that crushes those vehicles, they can probably dig out and solve the problem and still have their parking and get the vehicles out of the road. I thought, Chris. Who dug it out the beginning?
I assume that, uh, a gentleman on the scrapyard, I'm sure he dug it out. So... So he could... And I believe that he dug it out so he could turn big trucks and get big trucks where they could swing in there. I believe that's the primary reason it's dug out, so...
See, I would hope it would have approval.
Charles Baird?
What's the most... Get a survey or try to find a...
I don't need what we got. Determine the right of way and encourage County Highway Department to install a guardrail. Determine the right of way and encourage the county highway department to install a guardrail. Question?
Goodly thoughtful.
Any objection to the question? Seeing none. We're voting on the motion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes and press confirm. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. We have six yes, seven no. Notion fails. Marie Ayres, Johnny Bruce, J.L. Davis, Steve Rutherford, Terry Seemley, Bob Walden, Bobby White, voting no. Charles Baird, Beverly Hall, Tom Hatmaker, Sue Nance, Rusty Orick, Scott Stanfield, voting yes. Two absent.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Would it be appropriate to make a new motion and just have the right of way banned?
And we're gonna get the most...
I don't think we need commission approval for that, would we?
Then what's there?
We don't need commission approval for that. That's within Dennis's power, I would think. Ben Roach is convinced.
Somebody's gotta pay for it.
You have to have a budget. Some... Someone's got to have a budget. Hold on. Make a budget.
Okay.
It's gonna cost money. You gotta have some control before you can do it either. There's no money. Is that not now? We're doing...
Uh, the highway, I don't... I can just say. Right. Don't have anything on that. All right, move it on. Rusty Orick? You have a... You asked about the... You want to put the law here? Five o'clock, Sunday.
Yeah, Don had came in, I think he was in there the last week, and asked about the $5,000 that we set aside for him as matching grant. Requested the permission to either... I'm not telling you, Mary. To set... Either set it aside for next year or change the criteria of what they can give. So I think at this time, I... I know that they need the money, but I believe that we need to sit down and discuss all these ins and outs. Bring it to the EMS.
We're gonna have an EMS committee meeting this Thursday at 5:00.
But I don't want that money to return back into the budget cycle. I want it to stay. So my motion is that money to stay active and not go back to the general fund. Is that appropriate?
I think it is, about to be...
It's in that capital.
Yeah, Roger's just... He's been there and did it.
I think he was more concerned about that.
Right.
You know, than trying to get it right off the bat. He worried it was gonna go back in the general fund. So to be on the safe side, we'll make the motion that sets there. I'm such a... Then we can decide. The EMS can decide. I'll bring it up Thursday, Friday, Monday.
Everybody understand that? No objections? Five votes yes, five votes no, two votes no. You want me to change the vote? No vote. Back in December, we did a proclamation honoring Dean Sack. Oh, Thursday, at the time, sort of what we do. On Thursday at the time, or what it was, we just talked to Rusty, he's going to accept the proclamation. So I'll leave the, uh, the national, Campbell County, Tennessee, office, and make it. Whereas the Linnsey Specialty Service, the Linnsey Campbell County, where it's, it's January second, nineteen ninety, September twenty, two thousand eleven. Whereas her dedication is processed and proven, and voted in place, is acted by her involved service on the legislative committee. And whereas her service is being to association, the Campbell County District Committee provides a platform where her to be, to share the peace of all, all states. Whereas her achievements are scoring second highest in the state, among her peers, reflecting her hands-off, best-of-the-way of support. Their words were gathered on this nineteenth day of December, changes for the board of Campbell County Committee, with respect and admiration for years of service well-willed Campbell County. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, our appreciation for years of dedication, I proclaim this day to the day of Campbell County, and ask all the dorms, ladies, to share our appreciation and dedication, as she ends in the days of retirement, the vision she serves so effectively with our. We're about to claim this nineteenth day of December, twenty-eleven, while you know every Campbell County mayor.
She told me legends, I don't know that she really appreciate them, votes are red.
Okay, Josh, you asked about the softball.
Have we ever found out a place where they can play the adults? Be it White Bridge or?
The only place that I know of is, is Carrot.
It's a little league field now, Hasbury Park.
No, what about the old one?
I spoke with Mikey today, he's chairman, he said that they've done a request, what times that they needed to use the field at the high school. And they have that secondary field in the back, a vocational field, that, that, that we voted on by that board. They had an opening and it was okay with the principal, everything has to go with the principal, the real world, that he would bring it to a vote of whatever. They'd have to know the times and the dates, accommodate.
I talked to, um, the principal, she, she didn't have any concerns about it. The only concern she had was kind of like what, I guess y'all do up at Valley View, if there was going to be a league, that they would have to form the league and do the insurance and stuff like that in order to use the school grounds.
No, this is games right now, they don't have no place to play. They play in Lake City right now. See, they used to file it, they used to use that field, now it's a little league field. And then we shuffled Hasbury Park, they used to use that one, and it's a little league field.
They'll have to have a liability policy. They don't, and they, they're not going to be able to afford liability, I'm just going to tell you right now. But, Mr. Bruce, they won't be able to afford that, will they?
Just the basketball league.
They had her individual liability.
They do.
So they can't use the schools, can they?
EMS meeting, five o'clock, Thursday. Recreation Committee.
Uh, Goat and I talked earlier, and I think he was going to call, try and call the environmental community.
All departmental issues?
Other departmental.